I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who have perished to the coronavirus and through other unfortunate circumstances in the world today. May they rest in peace. Thank you. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Drapka.
President accounted for.
Trustee Clark. Trustee Hollenbach.
He had asked to be excused. He has a power outage and trees down at his house.
Trustee Lumpfer? Not in attendance?
He, I expect him to be here. I expect he's just running late because he was.
Supervisor Wilt?
Present.
Let the record note, Clerk Blau is in attendance.
Supervisor Wilt, do we have a forum?
We do have a voting forum. We have three out of five votes here.
Okay.
But trustee Lumpfer is expected, so. All right. Then the next item is the approval of the minutes of the May 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Minutes on May 5.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, second by trustee Drapka, to approve the minutes of the May 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Do I hear any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. We then have the minutes of the May 12th Board of Trustees Meeting. I will note that both of those meetings that we're approving minutes from took place electronically by remote means. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the minutes of the May 12th Board Meeting.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, second by trustee Drapka, to approve the minutes of the May 12th Board of Trustees Meeting. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. All right. Are there any communications, Clerk Blau?
Yes, we received a note. It says, "We are proud to support the Riverside Food Pantry. Thank you for all you do." It was from the Riverside Juniors and they gave a donation of $250, which was very nice.
Thank you.
We also have an email that was sent to Supervisor Wilt. And it says, "Hi there, Mrs. Wilt. I want to thank you and the township again for granting me $5,000 for my Eagle project. My Eagle project has been approved and I'm just waiting for a suitable time to do it as the circumstances do not permit me to work with others. I'll send an update once I have it." From Lane Combs. Very nice email.
Thank you. Do any other correspondence?
None.
Okay, thank you very much.
I asked if he knew you at the meeting, by the way. I did ask, I did.
Are there any public comments before we get to the grants? Anybody here for another purpose other than the grants? I don't believe so. All right then, let us take the first grant in our packets and that is the grant to Pathway to Adventure Council, Boy Scouts of America. And we do have some representatives here. Would you like to make an overall presentation before we begin? And there is a microphone over there that I believe the television crew would like you to use.
Okay.
Please identify yourself and if you have more than one person, I ask that you approach one at a time so we can maintain distance. That's fine.
So, all right.
So, good evening.
My name's Tim Strudeman. I am an employee of the Pathway to Adventure Council. I was here last year in front of you. My role is district executive, so I support all the Cub Scouts and Scout PSA troops in the area. My colleague here is Marilyn Lopez. She too is an employee of the Boy Scouts of America, works with our development team. Both Marilyn and I are here in support of our request for funding to develop and further the scouting movement here in Riverside and elsewhere in our community. Also with me is scout master John Flaherty. John is a community member scout master for troop, uh, 24? 24, thank you. 24. And John is a resident of the community as well and businessman. So I am here in brief, just to, I won't go into any great detail. I'm hopeful that much of what I provided in the grant request gives you a sense of how well we've done in the district from a membership perspective as well as events perspective. We've definitely delivered on the promise to build our program through the generosity of your grant last year as well as be able to state some really fantastic and wonderful experiences for our scouts in the community. So I'll leave it at that and take any questions if you'd like.
Yeah, I think, you know, after looking over the grant, I think that you did a really good job putting together the grant and addressing the concerns that some of the board members had, you know, last year and the year previously. I think that this really, you know, the way you presented it, because we know the issues that were involved, so I really liked the way you presented it, speaking on myself. I think it really hits home to the specifics as to what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments to this grant?
On your last thing, Police Explorer Post 390, chartered by the Fraternal Order of Police.
We have such an echo in here, can we keep the volume up as much as we can?
Okay.
Thank you.
For Police Explorer Post 390?
Mm-hmm.
Does that, does that take place in Riverside Township?
That is your colleague here in Riverside. Forgive me, I do not deal with him directly. My colleague Mike Hornick manages much of our Explorer Posts, which is a workforce development offering that the Boy Scouts of America have. So yes, we, the affiliated post that you have here in Riverside is a Boy Scouts of America entity.
So it does serve Riverside Township? I don't need to know who runs it, I just need to know if it serves Riverside Township.
It does, yes it does. Your community and the police force are partnered in bringing that to the youth in the area that are interested in a career in law enforcement.
The other thing on your grant request is, we have officially canceled our 120.
It's to be done tonight.
Oh, it's done tonight, okay, so just.
So we really would like to do something with you. What that looks like is unknown. We work eager to put together an event that would allow us to work with the Cub Scout packs in the area and present a Pinewood Derby experience at the 150th anniversary event. If it is canceled or postponed or whatever it may be, we'll look forward to doing something. And for that matter, we'd be willing to even do it in partnership with another youth organization in the community. So what that looks like, it seems like every day a new decision has to be made. So we're yet to be determined on what that looks like.
I make a motion that we grant the grant of $5,000 to Pathway to Adventure Council, Boy Scouts of America.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka, to award the grant to Pathway to Adventure Council, Boy Scouts of America in the amount of $5,000 according to the request made here tonight. Is there any other discussion? Then would Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you this year.
Yeah, and then we'll stay in contact with the new program, right? I mean, the, yeah?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Whatever we wind up doing, we'll certainly work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
The next item is the grant request to the Riverside Arts Center. And we also have a representative here this evening. Would you like to just give us a summary? We know who you are and what you do, but give us just a little overview.
Hello, I'm, is this working? Can you guys hear okay?
It works for the TV, so we can hear you here, so you can keep the voice up, but that's for the recording.
Oh, okay. I'm Camille Silverman and I'm with the Riverside Arts Center. We, we've been working through the COVID quite a bit. We've been building sculpture boxes for delivery and throughout Riverside and also to underserved communities. The donation boxes are all through individuals just hitting the donation option. So all of our donation boxes, we're not asking for the township to cover. Those are generally done through our membership. So it's, the, our delivery programs are quilts, they're design your own glass pendants, there are other glass design packages, and then we also have sculpture bowls or pre-bisc bowls that people can glaze. And then we also have sculpture packets or sculpture boxes with instructions. And we're also working on those instructions to be transcribed in Spanish for that underserved community. So it's very labor intensive because it's a pickup, it's been a pickup and a, or it's been a drop off, then we pick it up, fire it, and then drop it back. So we're hope, and then we also have these artists' interviews that we have been doing, which has really been beneficial to artists and curators. They use them for their portfolios and also the community who can still listen and be inspired by artists while they're making in their homes. And I've been doing, as an ED, I've been doing collage in place over Zoom with our membership and other people in the community. So that's been full every month. And so we just, we just haven't stopped, so it's been really great. We're hoping our next online interview will be with Kim Pietrowski, who is a local Riverside resident who we did a catalog last year on. So that's kind of what we're doing. We're doing a lot of outreach. We also want to continue this program, so we think with your support this year, we would like to grow it and be able to go to deliver clay boxes or quilting boxes to nursing homes or daycares or birthday parties or people that have mobility programs. So we, it actually, we got pretty inventive and I think it can be something that we can really grow and help people throughout Riverside and surrounding suburbs, so.
I think this pandemic has made a lot of creative people out of us.
Oh, yeah, and I wanted to show you guys, speaking of that, we just started mid-June to bring the quilting squares to people, so. And we want to construct a quilt in July or August, but here's some of the squares we've already gotten back. They're really great. So we've started to get those back and we'd like to construct a large quilt. And we're asking people, you know, they can stay positive, but we also understand that if people, you know, lost someone, we're not, I mean, they just need to talk about what they're going through, so, yeah. So that's what we've been doing.
Okay, what is your pleasure? Are there any questions?
When you say serving 2,190 people, is that Riverside Township residents or?
So, it's, well, I know, I mean, it's people all over, oh, no, it is 2,000, because I extracted the full number from, yeah, I did, I did pull the number from Riverside, yeah.
Is that adult and children?
It's adult and children, mm-hmm.
Quite impressive numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve this grant of $8,170 for the Riverside Arts Center.
I second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka, to grant the award of $8,170 as requested to the Riverside Arts Center. There's no other discussion? Clerk Blau, would you please call the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those boxes are still available, aren't they?
They are still available, yeah.
Okay, I want to get one for my nephew. I suppose that some of the ones that have been fired so far, so.
Did anyone have trouble with the door here tonight?
It was, when I came in, it was locked.
Yeah, I think trustee Clark unlocked it.
Is there somebody down there?
Yes, one of our trustees seems to be.
One more was forgotten.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a nice evening. Thank you for coming out on such a nasty evening.
Yes. We will let you know if some other event develops, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's part of life. What are you gonna do?
All right.
So I can, should I just, hey, they're so cute. Call and get some of those boxes, right?
Yeah, you can call and just call your door or website, whatever you.
Oh, okay, all right. And I can pick them up too. I mean, I just live a few blocks away.
Yeah, I can give you my cell number, because I can, I can dial it.
Okay.
It's a Colorado, 970, 250.
Wait, you know, maybe you should write it down, because we're on camera, or film.
It's actually, it's actually at the bottom.
In here.
Trustee Clark, it's actually at the bottom of your grant.
It's on the grant two.
Oh, it's on the grant two.
It's on the first page.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Now we can tell you that we did.
Okay, all right, great.
The door's locked.
It was. I don't know what. We didn't.
I thought we unlocked it.
Well, it needs to be, the push bar has to be opened.
That's what we did do.
Really?
That's what, maybe.
I don't know, somebody must have popped it closed again, sorry.
I was sitting out there yelling, "Open the door."
Oh, sorry, I just, I was confused when you responded with that.
Like, "I'm here."
Yeah, so much for open meetings, right? All righty.
That's what I was thinking.
They're closed meetings.
I don't know what happened there. The doors were supposed to be unlocked, so. All right. Our next item of business is the Township Theater Camp proposal. We have a letter here, as you see, from Jeannie Sheehan, trying to, as everybody else is, be creative about the theater camp this summer. And we don't actually do this as a grant. This is something that we budget for, but she wanted to run this by the board before, before starting to spend a great deal of money, let's just say.
How much do we give her?
I believe the budget item is a total of $5,000.
And this, does this come out of town programs?
It does, it does. We've adopted it basically as a town program. As you can see, this time there will be no use of this auditorium for a show because of the social distancing. Instead, they're going to videotape a show and make it available to the friends and relatives and such. So really, as I said, we've budgeted for this. I think that she would like to know that the board is still behind this concept, so.
So what type of motion? Do we need a motion for $5,000 or a motion just to?
To approve the expenditures as budgeted for, to stay within the budget as approved by this board.
So, huh.
No, a second, okay. I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka, to approve the modification of the summer theater camp to stay within the budget as we have approved. Then Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Lumpfer?
Aye.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. That is approved. We will go on to the next item, which is the Riverside Farmers Market voucher program. Basically, we're planning to do what we did last year, which would be three $5 vouchers per month to all food pantry recipients. It worked out pretty well last year. We've just included the information for you as to how the Farmers Market is going to run a little differently this year in order to comply with all the governor's orders and the Illinois Department of Health requirements for such events. They pretty much are following all of the rules as they have been set forth. They're reducing the Farmers Market to pretty much only edible items and none of those are prepared foods, so everything is a prepackaged thing and a no-touch kind of policy. But we had already approved any food item last year. These are the proposed, what the new vouchers would look like. There's really not much difference from last year's except the dates. And I would welcome your approval of our continuing that program for this year.
I have a motion.
I have a motion by trustee Lumpfer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Drapka. Any discussion, any questions? Hearing none. Since this will be an expenditure, once again, Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Lumpfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
The next item is the adoption of the Prevailing Wage Act. This is a fairly routine item that each elected body in the state really has to consider each year.
I'll make a motion to approve Riverside Township Ordinance 2020 dash, I believe it's two now.
Four.
Four? Four.
There you go.
I love that.
The clerk would know. All right. I have a motion to adopt Riverside Township Prevailing Wage Ordinance 2020 dash four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Clark, to adopt the Riverside Township Prevailing Wage Ordinance 2020 dash four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion is carried. Is that one nay? That was one nay, yes. Three ayes, one nay.
I just can't do it.
Okay.
I bet the vote.
Yes. Okay, next item is the Township Reopening Plan. There are a number of things that might fall under this. As you can see, tonight, we have arranged this room in such a way so that we can comply with social distancing. We've asked everyone to come in with masks, but then once you are six feet apart and we are all at least that, we're doing that. So far, we have not opened up the building for any large events, no, really even small meetings, other than the Village of Riverside held their first face-to-face meeting since the pandemic closed us all down last week and next week they plan to be up here. The only reason they didn't have their meeting up here last week was because the elevator was not yet running and it now is. I can assure you that everything that you can touch and see here has been well sanitized and that will happen again after our meetings, so we are, we are doing what we can in that regard. We also have been preparing for reopening the office to a little bit more face-to-face contact, but we are in the process. We've already obtained a counter that is on casters so that we can move it away from the front door, but so that nobody enters the office other than those working there. We are still waiting for one of the clear shields that will protect from face spray and so forth, and we hope that that will be arriving soon and that we can then open the doors and people can do their business there. However, it really hasn't slowed us down on many of the things that we've been doing. Other than that, the, I provided to you a memo that came yesterday from the Township Officials of Illinois, since we did postpone our annual meeting, the, there is a special, special rule that the governor has approved if, for those townships that feel they must have their annual meeting soon. I will say that our meeting, our agenda, was nothing more than reports. There were no major issues to be decided upon, so we can still wait. However, it could be a while. And according to this, even if we wanted to, so this provides for townships to hold their meetings as early as the second, I'm sorry, the Tuesday after the expiration of the disaster proclamation or on the third Tuesday in July. If we want to do that, we could do this, but we would have to get approval of the County Health Department, that we have a proper plan for distancing and sanitation and so forth. We can do it for July. We could not do it any sooner than that, but obviously June would be too soon. We would have had to have on today's agenda, however, or we would have to have on the July agenda, it has to be approved first to go to the annual meeting. The board would have to approve that. It had to be on an agenda. It couldn't happen today because the agenda was already published and the agenda would, it would have to be on the agenda for at least 48 hours in advance. We only got this memo about 30 hours ago. So the next step then would be that it would have to be approved at a regular board meeting. Our next regular board meeting is not, doesn't allow enough time to approve a meeting and then provide 15 days notice for the annual meeting. It's just, it's kind of a catch-22, just when it falls. Long story short, the earliest we could actually schedule it under this rule would be August. If you'd like to do that, we can do that for the August meeting, but, and we can put it on the July agenda to approve that the meeting be held in August.
No, I don't think so. I think we should just wait until the governor's order is lifted and then, then we'll move forward with that. That's my personal opinion.
And then what that will provide is that the annual town meeting would be the third Tuesday after the expiration of the disaster proclamation.
I mean, it's not worth it to ask for permission from the Cook County Health Department.
Right.
I mean, I don't, come on.
Right, and, and the timing is such that it really is, you have to approve it at a board meeting first, then you have to go to the Health Department, then you have to have 15 days notice before the meeting. It just, the timing doesn't work out.
Well, the bottom line is some of the townships across the state are beholden to their budgets at the annual meeting. Ours isn't, so.
Right, either the budgets or they have major expenditures. They want to acquire land, sell land, things like that, and we are not in that situation. So, very good. If that is the pleasure of the entire board, would you like to make that a motion that we just wait? Pardon?
Since there was nothing pressing on that.
Just wait until the natural. Just wait until the natural time?
I think just wait until the natural thing. I mean, you know, we give reports at every meeting, too.
Right.
So I, there's nothing, I don't think there was going to be anything earth-shattering the reports. So I'd be in favor of waiting. How do you feel, Ian?
I'm all for waiting.
Tom?
All right.
I'm with you.
All right. So then we will wait until the natural time, the third Tuesday after the, the suspension of the order. All right. Are there any other matters that concern you regarding the reopening plan for the township?
One thing I do have is, are there, do we anticipate any increased?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Tom.
Are there any increased costs due to increased cleaning, and are we going to anticipate?
I think that they're de minimis. There's really, you know, we've budgeted for proper cleaning. We've, I don't really anticipate a whole lot more. You know, most things that are needed can be done with, in the normal course of cleaning that we already have been doing. I'm not anticipating a lot of other expenditures because of this. I thought that we might have a large uptick in general assistance, as well as food pantry. Food pantry has had some increase, and so has general assistance, but many people actually wound up getting unemployment.
Yeah.
Or they wound up not really needing it as they thought. Their companies decided to allow them to work from home, and some people just apparently, I did put out some applications for general assistance to people who never responded. I also had one case of general assistance who accepted it the first month and never returned to, to meet, and I called and didn't hear. So there are, you know, some, some matters, people seem to be either finding a way, finding relatives, doing something. Food pantry, again, it, it has had somewhat of an uptick, but the community has been incredibly generous, and we've gotten donations both in kind and in cash, and so, again, we're in good shape there.
Would, do we want to consider adding a cleaning charge or disinfecting charge to events that we're holding, or do we just want to wait and see?
So those are fees that we could review and see. Right now, we're not allowing any large events yet.
Right.
And when we do, obviously, that will be an item, so that's something to consider.
I'm sorry, Tom, but trustee.
I mumble, and I can't hear, so.
I didn't, I can't hear.
This place is an echo chamber, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I only hear from one ear, so it's very difficult for me to hear you.
Um, I was just asking whether we want to anticipate increased cleaning costs when we start opening up the, the grand old building here to events. We're going to have an increased charge in cleaning, so maybe we want to charge a surcharge, or at least give ourselves the option of doing that?
Certainly. I mean, we've, we've only been at this for about a year, and we need to review whether those prices are where they should be anyway. So that's something I can put on the next agenda to review whether that's a, something to deal with, so.
Yeah, I will take this moment to say that everyone I've heard back from loves the new rental policy. The juniors coming here, everyone being able to use this now, it's been a big hit. So let's figure out how to keep that going when we can.
Okay, thank you. Anything else that you have concerns about for the reopening? We're trying to take it a step at a time, and since we were functioning the whole time, and the custodians were touching up and doing various things, and we actually had the opportunity to get the elevator project completed. We just got our thirty-day temporary permit today. There's a couple of small punchless items, but nothing that was, that would have held the inspector back, so he gave us, gave us the approval to run the elevator. So it doesn't look different, very different on the inside. We need to spruce it up a little bit now. We'll, we'll probably need to put down some new carpeting because the work in progress did soil that, but maybe a good cleaning will do it. All right. There's nothing else regarding the reopening. We, we do still have masks. We, I brought some of the masks here, and so the building is requiring masks on entry, and we are asking people to maintain social distancing. We have disinfectant items around and all of that. All right. Then let's move on to the next item. I had a request to place on the agenda, the discussion of perhaps some kind of recognition, award, reward of some kind from the township to the first responders who have so, so well-served the community during all of this. Did you have anything in particular in mind?
Yeah, so this is kind of, I came up with this and ran past supervisor Wilt. You know, they're going through a lot. I, I have a lot of friends who are cops, and this isn't a political statement, but it's just an attaboy to the cops in our township that have been doing a really good job. I reached out to chief Weitzel to see what the protocol is, whether the township actually can do that, and there's no toes that we would be stepping on, and he was very enthusiastic and thought it would be a wonderful idea to help with the morale of the, the police forces in our township who are actually really stressed and stretched thin at this point. He said he'd get back to me in a couple of weeks about some ideas, but, you know, the original one I had would be like a ribbon for their uniform, some kind of metal, something that could be a visual reminder to them of what they did, and what they put up with, and what they went through during all of this, and a visual reminder of the support from the community. But I'll let the township and the police departments kind of give us a lead on that, what they think would be more appropriate. You know, just some kind of token of appreciation for the hard work and the, the stress that they're going through.
Just to make it clear, I would want to also reward the, the departments in other communities other than just Riverside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
The, all three of them.
Right. Any comments, any suggestions, any thoughts on that?
Are we talking about like a plaque they can put on their wall, or?
He was talking about maybe a ribbon or a medal that could go on the uniform. I don't know. I'd have to talk to the chiefs about whether anything like that. I think that they try to keep the uniforms
Pretty clean, yeah.
Kind of clear, clean. Not to mention, a lot of it is a shirt type of thing, so.
Right.
But.
Something. I don't think a monetary award, but I think some form of appreciation, whether it's a ceremony, you know, obviously, everyone loves their badges and their patches and their ribbons, so that might be a natural one. But I would bet each individual department kind of tell us what they think their officers would need, or would want, or would appreciate. But I think it is such a difficult time, and these guys are, these officers are going through such a tough time, that I think the support from the community might be a good shot in the arm for them.
Okay.
So that'll be a wait and see. When the things calm down, you know, maybe we reach out to the other two departments.
Sure.
You know, we do one big ribbon, or, you know, each department figure out what they want, and we'll take their lead, but I think it's important to show our appreciation.
Very well. I'll work with them and try to come up with something for a future meeting that we can have a better idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we thinking of only police, or other first responders as well?
I think the police are the ones who are putting up with the brunt of it, and, I mean, we can give it to everyone, or we can make it special, or, so my, my initial reaction would be, in this area where there hasn't been much arson, there hasn't been much looting, the, the fire departments haven't been called out that much, that maybe we, we keep it to the police departments, but then again, I'll go with whatever the sentiment of the board is.
Any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Whether, well, I asked whether we should be looking at just police or other first responders as well, and trustee Lupfer indicated that he felt that most of the, the extra duty, extra, extra stresses of the circumstances of the last few months have been on the police, but we certainly could consider if there's anything for other department, you know, fire departments and paramedics and such
Yeah.
That we should be looking at. All right, I'll, I'll try to get a feel for what, what kind of additional stresses, additional shifts, that kind of thing that people are dealing with, and what we might be able to do.
And my, my philosophy when giving out awards has always been give as many people as you can, right?
Okay.
If the fire departments, paramedics, you know, why not?
Okay, so.
What about bankers?
I'm sorry?
What about bankers? The bankers have been here the whole time. Nobody ever remembers to thank them.
Well, in that case, then why aren't we thanking the, the essential workers? I mean, we can thank all of them. People that are working in the grocery stores, people that are.
Right, I know, that's what's, so.
Hornet's nest here.
It can't be a participation award.
You'd have the restaurants, that's what.
Yeah.
That's what.
All right.
I, I want to give an award to the, to the.
People like supervisor Wilt and the, the office staff that have been here every single day.
Yeah. I want to give it to the parents who had to stay home and do e-learning with their kids, man. Oh, my God.
Oh, well. All right. Well, let me, let me do some investigating and some, some creative thinking there. Thank you. And if any of you come up with any thoughts, please let me know.
And I was a little late, so the, the one township or trustee report I have is that the Community Garden is extremely happy with the grant they got. They gave them the best soil they could have. They have the tools they need, and they, they're.
We actually, because it was a grant month, we haven't gotten to the trustee report, so I'll let you reserve that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So I will just report, much of it I've been keeping you abreast of. You know, we've, we've been functioning all the way through. I'm happy to report that the elevator is up and running, that the, I did a rough estimate of the participation in our shredding event, and actually, we had at least a hundred and sixty participants, just counting by what we gave out in appreciation for their attendance. So it was very popular. We had a perfect day for it, and later on, I'm going to propose another, another such event. Other than that, everybody's been doing, you know, coming to work regularly. We haven't had any cases within staff or anything of illness, and we're, we're just trying to get the, the job done. We're working, we did put up a sign at the bridge to keep social distance. Of course, we had to wait until the flooding stopped and the flood receded because that naturally closed the bridge for a while. We didn't want to close the bridge, but we did put it, and we actually used our anniversary logo for the first time on something large to do that. So both ends of the bridge have that. I haven't seen whether our planting project has yielded any, any produce yet, but that's about all I have to report, unless you have any questions I can answer. Okay, then trustees' reports. Since you started, I'll let you.
Sorry. I should peruse the agenda first. But as I was saying, the Community Garden is extremely happy with the grant. They, they feel that it really helped them push things over the, over the top, and that they've got the great soil and soils everything. The tools helped, so they've been effusive in their praise. I did plant all those sunflower seeds the day before the big flood.
So hopefully, they didn't all wash away?
So maybe they'll come up. I don't know if they will. And that's, that's it for my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Clark, do you have anything?
First of all, Vera, the shredding event was really great, so, and thank you, Tom, for planting the rest of those seeds, so.
Thank you.
For that, and I delivered mass to our seniors. They were very appreciative, the ones that I actually spoke to.
We've had a few people call and thank us, too.
Have you?
The ones that I distributed, there was a lot of good feedback. People were very happy. People who didn't know that, but know people, other people thanked me in indirect ways for distributing them in North Riverside, so it was a very nice gesture, collaborated it, and I think it was well-received within the community.
Good, good. Yes, we've actually had a few calls also after Saturday, and there was a lot of good feedback on Facebook, too.
Right.
Because I had, I had posted it during the course of the day, and a lot of people complimented how smoothly it went, how, how good it was that we had the forethought to deal with the distancing and so forth, and they just loved it, so.
Great.
Yes. Would you like to mention the exercise class and what we're going to be doing? Or would you like me to address it? Yeah, actually.
You're probably more up to date than I am on this.
So we were trying to figure out, since we've had people calling, wanting to know if the exercise classes would be starting, and we really, we have to hold back on it. For one, we always have more than ten participants. That's a no-no, and because of the way our seniors work in a circuit, it's not like when you go to a gym and you wipe everything down after each use. They, they do a circuit, and they all touch all the same things, so it would just be kind of a logistical nightmare to start up. However, we, we have Jerry and Riverside TV collaborating, and actually, the village has allowed us the, the regular discounted rate, that basically the cost of the TV, for us to tape two classes a week and then broadcast them at another time. So to, starting tomorrow, they will tape Jerry doing two classes in a row, and then they will be broadcast at two separate times, and they will both be broadcast on Riverside TV, and as those broadcasts are always available, then they'll also make them available on our website and, and on YouTube. So people who have heard about it are very excited. Once we have them in the can, so to speak, we will make sure that all of our regular participants know, and we will also make an announcement for the general public, for those who would like to see what this exercise class is all about.
That's wonderful.
Doesn't our deal with Riverside TV include extra?
Well, basically, we pay, we, we have a set amount for all of our meeting broadcasts, and then, yes, they're always willing to do more for us, but we have to pay for the cost of the crew in those cases. So basically, Riverside has extended not a marked-up price, but what the actual cost is, so I'm, I'm very pleased with that. And because we had, what, by now, it's almost three months of cessation of the classes, we have the money in the program to, for the extra cost of televising it, and we're only doing the two rather than three classes, so we will continue to have that savings of one class a week for now. And hopefully, one of these days, because so much of that class is also the social interaction, I hope that we'll be able to get back to those classes soon.
Is he doing two new classes every week, or is he just two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's going to tape two new classes every week, and I've asked for it to be done through June and through July, and then we'll see where we are after that, if we'll be able to open up classes or not, depending on what the standing order becomes.
And is each class forty-five minutes?
Each will be forty-five minutes, so it'll be two forty-five-minute classes broadcast per week.
Great.
Okay. Very good. And trustee Drapka, do you have something for us?
No report.
Okay, thank you very much. Mental Health Board, there is some information in your packets, and they are meeting tomorrow night, so, tomorrow, no, next week. They're meeting next week, so if you have any other interest in any of the things that they are doing, I will tell you that we are also looking to revive the plan for a, a broadcast, a remote educational program. Dr. Tryani, the consultant to the Mental Health Board, is working on not only a suicide prevention, but a general anxiety and all the other mental health issues that have arisen because. that have arisen because of our, um, social distancing, our having to stay at home and so forth. So, we're working on having really the involvement of the various agencies that work with the mental health board, each with their own expertise, and put together a nice program that we would then, again, engage Riverside TV for, uh, the taping of and the broadcast. We, I don't know what it's going to look like quite yet, but, uh, then, we, I've told him that I want this sooner than later, so we're working on putting something together, and I hope to hear probably some, something by next week when the, uh, mental health board meets.
That would be great, it's so much needed at this time, too.
Absolutely. Okay, um, so onward, unfinished business. So, the planning for our township anniversary, I think that we can see from all the large-scale events that have been canceled in the state, in the city, uh, and so forth, that we really can't hold out any hope to hold the kind of event that we were going to do on September nineteenth. With the enthusiasm and the success of our, uh, shredding event this past Saturday, I was hoping that we could have at least something on that day anyway. Unfortunately, of course, the shredding company that we've been so pleased with the last two times is already, um, booked for the nineteenth. However, they have the September twelfth or September twenty-sixth available, and I would love to call them in the morning. I've already checked with the Masonic Lodge, and they are also on board and available for us to hold on either one of those dates. At least to have something, and then maybe, um, the participants can get something that is commemorative of our anniversary on that date.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm quite ready to throw in the towel. Um, I think the situation is so dynamic that two weeks from now, I mean, we just heard that the whole idea of the lockdown was based on something that's not true anymore, so. I, I still think maybe a week, maybe two, I, I mean, we can't put this decision off forever, but I still think there's a little window here where we might still be able to pull off some kind of pared-down event that will, I don't think we should just get rid of it. I, I think we should start planning on something smaller. I think the, again, the dynamic situation, that everything's changing so fast, that maybe we will be able to have some kind of event, maybe not shoulder-to-shoulder beer drinking to a band who's playing under the laser show, but I, I think maybe we could do something.
Do you have some idea of what that would look like? I mean, I'm really concerned because I think even when we get to the next couple of stages, they're saying no large-scale events, and I understand you're saying smaller scale, but who do we cut out? You know, how, how small an event do we plan? My concern is that, um, you know, we're only in stage three, they think that stage four might, you know, phase four might come soon, but even that's only going to increase by a little bit, and they're saying that no large-scale events until there's a vaccine is the likely thing. So, if you have any ideas, I mean, I don't know how to, you know, I, I would love to make something available that people could come and participate and leave, but I don't know what that would look like at this point. Any thoughts from any of the other trustees?
I need to think about it, and, you know, I, I'm really, uh, very hesitant to hold anything that's overly big. The shredding event was great, but just from, uh, health and safety standpoint?
Well, Riverside just held a six-hundred-person protest in Big Ball Field.
Riverside didn't hold that.
It, there was a very large gathering in Big Ball Field yesterday, right near my house.
Today, was today?
That was today.
Today, today at eleven.
Yeah, it was today, but that wasn't a village-sponsored event, that was a group of people?
Well, that, that's, I, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, that kind of stuff means that the situation is not going to be the same in a week or two or three. I think, um, the stages were made three, four weeks ago when, uh, information we had was completely different than information we have now. I think the, 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 uh, situation the past week or two with, with massive gatherings in public is making this whole lockdown concept a little bit antiquated at this point. And I really think that within two, three, four weeks, things are gonna be completely different.
Check on people walking. Oh, that, it could be the river rats that are crossing.
Well, I'm not saying we plan, I'm saying we-
Don't cancel yet?
Don't cancel, let's hold out hope. I'm, I'm an optimist.
Okay. My concern is, I think that we're going to see within the next few weeks what the impact of all of the large gatherings that we've seen over the past week are going to do to the health, whether the, you know, whether the virus is going to be going into a new stage, you know, another, um, another rush of it. Yeah, I think we do have to wait and see. I think that we can safely say that the event as we envisioned it is not going to happen on that date. I don't think that there's any way we can have a bunch of booths and, as you said, drinking and music and, you know, laser shows and all that kind of thing. I don't think there's any way we can envision that for September. However, I, again, I invite any and all of you to give me any ideas of what we could do that would still allow for the social distancing. Uh, you know, I'm concerned about serving food at this point, you know, even, you know, restaurants are, are having their struggles, so.
Maybe our next meeting might be too late, so, I mean, that's July, so maybe we have a committee of the whole or something in, in the interim. As, I still think right now it's so dynamic, things are changing so fast, that just give themselves a week, maybe two weeks. I think by that time, if things are lifted, people are gonna be dying for some kind of social interaction, and if we're prepared to give that to them, I think it would, it would, uh, be a good position to be in. But I think, I don't think we need to make the decision tonight, but I think we need to make it pretty soon. Are we gonna have our-
And we can hold off or try to come up with some other ideas, I just, um, you know, we don't know yet what the results, if, if viruses, the coronavirus is gonna spike after, you know, holding, you know, the protest and stuff. I know in Wisconsin where they have no rules, and it was a total zoo on Memorial Day weekend, and their rates, you know, spiked up since they opened. Um, so, um, I don't see the harm in waiting a year to put on, you know, the big event that we had, um, you know, planned for September nineteenth. And, you know, due to the circumstances, so what if it's a year later, you know, we couldn't do it in twenty-twenty. And I also think that would give us more, an advantage to more of, uh, financially, to make sure that we have enough money, you know, coming in. Um, I don't think it's really prudent to spend that much money right now on festivities. You, what I would like to see, if we were gonna do something, is maybe a drive-through food pantry where people, you know, could sign up and, you know, we give them a box of groceries, and we also give them, you know, a carton of fresh eggs and butter, and maybe work with, um, Riverside Foods to get the, um, refrigerated stuff for that, and then, you know, flour and cereal, I don't know, whatever other people put in a food pantry. I'd really like to see us do something like that, and maybe limited, I don't know, two hundred people?
And I definitely think that's something that we could pull off in a short period of time. I see that middle of September is four months away, and if we look at four months ago, uh, things are a little bit different.
Three months.
June, July, August.
It's, it's mid-June, July, August, September.
Three months, now, see, that's what I said, maybe a council, a committee of the whole.
It's three months.
But I, I would hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think while we're not gonna have our barbecue cook off and our big band and all that stuff, I think we can still do something. I think in three months, people are gonna be desperate for that kind of connection, that kind of connectivity with their, with their neighbors and their community. And I think things move so fast right now that, just give us a couple of weeks, you know, I'll be willing to make a decision in two weeks. But right now, I mean, we literally just heard that non-symptomatic people aren't carriers. So, I mean, there's, there's news coming out every day about the virus that we didn't know about, um, so in three months' time, I think we'll be living in a completely different world.
Unfortunately, that, even that non-symptomatic, that seems to be subject to debate again.
Well, the same person came out the next day.
The doctors don't agree again, so.
Uh, I think someone called her. Uh, but what I'm saying is, I think we have a couple of weeks before we have to say we're going to a shred-a-thon. Um, I don't know what the feeling of the board is, but-
Well, again, it wouldn't be on the same date anyway, and I, the, if, people who came on Saturday were asking, are we gonna do this again soon? And they, and people who missed it, who couldn't make it on Saturday, or who learned too late, were saying, oh, are you gonna do it again? So, I mean, and it wouldn't be on the same date anyway, and it doesn't take that much, so I think that we can still go forward with choosing one of those dates. Would one, one date be better than the other for all of you, the, the twelfth versus the twenty-sixth?
It, either date's fine with me.
I am supposed to be volunteering at the Ryder Cup on the twenty-sixth, but I have a feeling it's-
The twelfth, I mean, the twelfth was the date I, I kind of reserved anyway.
Twelve is great for me, as I said, I think the Ryder Cup's gonna be postponed.
Probably, but, but just in case.
Yeah, but, but, you know, I mean, uh-
Right.
It runs, so, that's my, uh, personal thing, but-
All right. Any objection to the twelfth? Everybody's okay with the twelfth? Okay?
I won't be, I won't be able to-
You won't be in town? Okay. All right. Um, again, I mean, we've discovered the, um, the Masonic Lodge is very helpful in setting it up, so it really doesn't take a lot from us.
Yeah, they were very nice.
Yes, yes. All right, so what I'm hearing is, let's wait and try to figure out something that we can still do during September and hopefully on the nineteenth, that, uh, that might still be an outreach to the community in some way.
Yeah.
Again, I ask that you, any, any ideas you see, anything that you, uh, read about, please suggest it because sometimes I run out of ideas.
Yeah. I can't, yeah, I'm really gonna have to think about that.
Yeah.
But to follow up with trustee Clark, are we still looking to do some kind of celebration, even if it's a delayed celebration?
Well, I think eventually we'd still like to do something bigger.
I think we'd like to do something, uh, yeah, I don't know how other people feel about it, but if, uh, we, if other people feel we need to do something, I see no harm in waiting a year.
Yeah, and I-
Or waiting until May, you know, the weather can be kinda iffy, but I really, you know, don't see any harm in that.
Well, and who knows, maybe we should consider some kind of a holiday thing, something, you know, even at Christmas time, maybe something that will be an opportunity for the community to, to enjoy this building instead of the outdoors.
My, yeah, idea for the holiday thing was, maybe we could do, um, kinda like an indoor tailgate thing and get the Redmond's to play, and then people could bring their own, um, food and alcohol and stuff, and maybe we pass out cookies or something, like that.
All right.
Set up some tables in here. I think that might be, you know, something we'll have to do.
All right, we'll have to keep watching what, what we're allowed to do, what is recommended that we do and so forth.
You know, and maybe, I don't know if that's something we wanna do after dinner, or like I do it, like as a happy hour thing from five to seven or four to six.
Okay.
That would be my thought.
All right. All right, uh, keep those ideas coming, I like it, um, and we'll, we'll see what, what else we can do. All right, and the question came up, are we going to have a committee of the whole meeting? We are scheduled, the way the m- months fall this, uh, this time, it's a ways away, but, uh, June, July seventh is our next scheduled committee of the whole. Shall we keep that on the agenda in case we have some of this discussion to do?
I'm fine with that, that's-
Okay. And that would be a six-thirty meeting? Okay.
What's that date?
That's Tuesday, July seventh, is our committee of the whole at six-thirty. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, um, next item of business is simply for your information, we have the monthly report. We didn't actually meet this time, it's just been kind of, um, you see that there's, there's not a lot of activity, there's nothing to, for us to publicize, except we did put in agendas, we put in the shredding event and such. So, if we're not making news, we're not creating a stir. So, we did get a little bit of, um, bump on Facebook, um, outside of this, but both for the shredding event, as well as, um, there was a story on the farmer's market page about what we're doing and that we're gonna participate again and so forth. So, we're getting a little bit of, uh, good press every now and then here. All right, any questions? As I said, we did not meet with, uh, the webmaster, so I don't know that I know any more than what you have on imprint here. All right, on to, just for your information, uh, I bet, that's it, and so that's, is all that's on our agenda, and the next order of business would be the approval of warrants. Trustee Drapka, or, or are you gonna read?
Yeah, uh, I got a question here, um, what are the keys for?
Oh, the keys, we had to, um, so when the village experienced flooding, the, uh, Indian cabin was underwater. The police had a secondary station work, working out of there, and they had to evacuate it. And so they, they were using room twenty-two here, as a matter of fact, they still have some lockers there. Uh, they had radio equipment, they had lockers, they, you know, so they came and went from there, it was like a, a secondary station. So, um, they needed to come and go at all hours, so they, we issued some keys, and as a matter of fact, just today, they were, they returned almost all of them, there's, they still have two out because of the, uh, the lockers, and, but we will be getting those back.
And then I didn't know that we had a constant contact.
That we, oh, that is actually the assessor's office.
Well, we pay it.
It comes out of our budget, I mean, it's, it comes out of our warrants. All the things, you know, she sets her budget, but the township pays all those bills for the assessor's office. Okay?
I make a motion to authorize the bills identified in the general warrant, June twenty-twenty, the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, do, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, here, trustee Lupfer seconds, uh, trustee Drapka makes the motion to approve the general warrants for June twenty-twenty in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Clerk Flower, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I make a motion that we authorize payment of the utility warrant in the amount of eight hundred and seven dollars and three cents, pay, uh, payroll in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, fifty-seven cents. Health warrant in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, and general assistance warrant in the amount of thousand, two hundred dollars, and the food pantry warrant in the amount of two hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you, I have a motion by trustee Drapka, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants, uh, for June twenty-twenty. Utility warrant in the amount of eight hundred and seven dollars and three cents, payroll warrant in the amount of fif- eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents, the health warrant in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, general assistance warrant in the amount of twelve hundred dollars, food pantry warrant in the amount of two hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Trust, uh, clerk Flower, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
I make a motion we adjourn this beautiful meeting.
I second it.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Lupfer. I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Lupfer, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.